Listen, it could be, don't forget the mic. The mic is hot. The mic is hot. Did you put batteries in it today?
You know what? We have a big battery.
Yeah, big batteries. Batteries voting in.
Welcome, ladies and gentlemen, to the City of Farmers Branch Regular City Council Meeting. It is Tuesday, September 20th, 2022. The time is 6:01 PM. We will begin, as always, with our invocation and pledge of allegiance, which will be led by Councilmember Merritt tonight.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for allowing us to come together this evening to do the business of the city, the community, and the individuals that support it. We look forward to discussions and working to come to a better solution for all of those parties. We're thankful for all the first responders that are in the room this evening for the event that is about to occur. And we'll ask all of this in the patron saint, Florian, who is the patron saint of firefighters this evening. Amen. Follow me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all. Now, if you'll follow me with the Texas pledge.
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one individual.
All right, next is our ceremonial items. So with that, I will ask Mr. Latimer to come forward. Also, Mr. Williamson. Wherever he is. He'll be here. So tonight, we are, the recognition of Daniel Latimer for 15 years of service to the City of Farmers Branch and his appointment to fire chief. Now, before we start, I'm gonna have to ask a few people to leave because we're over capacity in this room. Figured the guys in the back would know that, but, you know, I'm just kidding. We have more than enough room in here for everyone to celebrate this guy right here. Daniel Latimer was born and raised in Greenville, Texas, by two amazing parents, Doug and Sherri Latimer. He also has two amazing sisters, Kelly and Julie, that have been huge supporters of him throughout his life. After graduating high school, Daniel went on to play football at Stephen F. Austin University and then finished out his college career at Texas A&amp;M University Commerce. Growing up, Daniel learned a lot from his family values and faith, as well as from coaches that inspired him to never give up and to always strive for excellence. Both sets of his grandparents have also contributed greatly to Daniel's life and have guided him along the way. Daniel was hired on September of 2007 as a firefighter EMT. He has been in the fire service for 15 years, rising through the ranks, and ultimately becoming the sixth fire chief in the history of the City of Farmers Branch on September 11th, 2022. Additionally, he also has a teaching background at Brookhaven College, where he was an adjunct professor in the EMS division. He also worked for several years in the emergency room at Medical City Dallas. Daniel also comes with prior business experience from working in the private sector, supporting program management on multimillion-dollar defense contracts. He has also gained entrepreneurial excellence from supporting his wife's architectural and design firm, Latimer Designs, Inc. Good plug there. Daniel is a certified master firefighter, fire officer two, fire instructor three, and driver operator. He is also a licensed paramedic and an EMS instructor through the Texas Department of State Health Services. He holds a Bachelor of Science from the University of Texas A&amp;M Commerce and has been accepted into the Masters of Public Administration program at the University of Texas Arlington. Daniel has been married to his beautiful wife, Leanne, for 12 years. They have two amazing kids, Madison, 10, and Grady, eight. Daniel and his family live in Flowermount, Texas, and are very active in their community, church, and their kid's school. They enjoy spending time with one another, traveling, and supporting their children in their academics and their sporting activities. Most importantly, the Latimers love Jesus and love serving others. They are members of Valley Creek Church in Flowermount and love getting to be hope carriers. Daniel and his family genuinely love the firefighters and the families of the Farmers Branch Fire Department. He is very aware that he would not be where he is in his career without the help and guidance of interim city manager John Land, assistant city manager Ben Williamson, human resources director Brian Beasley, administrative assistant Barbara Solari, assistant chief Shannon Langford, assistant chief Tim DeDeer, assistant fire marshal Scott Burke, fire inspector Wendy Kempton, captain Brian LaFour, Terry Barthold, captain Mike Campbell, captain Johnny Garcia, assistant chief Lane Henderson, battalion chief Jerry Cromer, battalion chief Steve Lamar, battalion chief Rusty Henley, captain Brandon Baumann, captain Jason Shelby, firefighter Jeff Tucker, firefighter Todd Worley, firefighter Gareth Rossin, and many other firefighters and officers, too many to name, that have paved the way for him and his career. He will be forever grateful to everyone that has been patient and gracious to him as he has grown in the fire department over the last 15 years. So before I turn it over to Ben Williamson, I just want to say, having known you for the six years that I've been at the helm of this job, I have to say that it's been very obvious how many people respect and admire you, how you've grown everywhere you've been. You've been a leader. You've shown that not only on the field but in school, in your private life, through the church, and here in the City of Farmers Branch. And we couldn't be more grateful for your tenure at this city, what you mean to the fire department. And I will say that as good as you are at your job and as good as you are at playing football, you're an even better person, and that matters most. So just want to say thank you. Looking forward to, hopefully it's not just another five years, but hopefully another 15, but that's a budget joke. But no, I'm gonna turn it over to Ben to say a few words.
You know, this is one of the best things about doing this job is getting to celebrate your team and what they do and successes they achieve. And seeing this moment right here with Daniel Latimer, so first, you know, I want to start by thanking his family. He has given a lot for this city, for the business owners, the residents, and for those firefighters back there at the back of the room, the whole fire department. I can't tell you how many nights he was emailing me at 10 o'clock on a Saturday night, 10 o'clock on a Friday night, Sunday mornings, working and fighting for his department to make it the best it could possibly be. And so that's why I want to say thank you to his family first, because I know that was a sacrifice for him to do that, to get to this point, the fire department to where it is today. That couldn't have been done without your sacrifices, without your family standing behind you. And I feel like I know all of you, and all of you at the back of the room, because I hear about you all every time we interact, how sports are going, how the home is going, how you were gonna come and help him with his office and make sure it looked respectable. I mean, I hear the stories about you, about his parents, and from all of you all back there and all the accomplishments, because he likes to brag on his team. And it's amazing, because y'all do amazing things, and he makes sure that we know about it. So I love that part. So I want to make sure you all know, thank you for loaning him to us for all those extra hours, nights, and weekends. And that's the first part. The other part about Daniel, for everybody that's here, if you haven't met him yet, you will meet him. He does not know a stranger. What you see is what you get with Daniel. This is not an act. This is not a facade. He loves everything about what he does, and he will shake everybody's hand in this room, talk to you and get to know you really quickly. But if you haven't had a chance to get to know your fire chief, please get to know your fire chief. He's the best there is, and I say that with confidence. We are lucky to have him in Farmers Branch for the next 10, 15 years, 20 years, hopefully, leading us into the future. He is absolutely fantastic, hands down, the best there is. We're lucky to have him here. And the last part, Daniel the fire chief. You know, this journey started about nine months ago when he became our acting fire chief, and I gave him a challenge. I said, Daniel, reinvent what it means to be a fire chief. And wow did he take that challenge, even from the very beginning. I've never seen somebody so relentless in his pursuit of fighting for his team. So to all the firefighters back there, I know many of y'all have seen his budget presentation. He is fighting for y'all every day. He fights for you all. He talks about you all. He's the best leader you could possibly ask for, somebody up there to fight for you all and have your back. He absolutely does. He's a servant leader. I walk with him. We have to fight to open doors. We have to fight to pick up trash off the floor. He does this every day, everywhere he goes. You see him outside of City Hall. He's out there picking up trash that needs to be picked up. Same for you all. There's no job that's beneath him, and that's truly servant leadership. He's always going to be that way. One thing that Daniel is not scared to do is tell you, tell me how much he loves every single one of you. So to the fire department, you know, you look at all these officers, all these firefighters, you know, former football player, fit, doing all these things, he doesn't, he never shies away from saying how much he loves his people. And that is absolutely true. He loves that team back there. He loves you all, too, as the residents, just to make sure y'all know how he feels about his team back there. But when you put it all together, put this package together, we are fortunate as the City of Farmers Branch. I'm fortunate to have him as the fire chief, a friend, a colleague, somebody I know that will be there for me and I will be here for him. And so just making sure you all know, as the residents, there's a lot more to what you see. There's a very complex person here that does a lot for the city in so many ways and absolutely loves the City of Farmers Branch, and it shows in everything he does. You know, we're here celebrating him as the fire chief. He did not want to have this celebration, you know. He's like, no, 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 I'm feeling sick, is what I heard earlier today. And so that was, that was taken care of pretty quick. You know, he's gonna save putting on this hardware in the ceremony to be with his team, because they have a ceremony as a team together, and he wanted to respect the tradition and culture of the fire department. I totally respect that. But I said, since you're up here getting recognized for 15 years, let's also celebrate. The big part here is you're now our fire chief. We're here to celebrate you, and it speaks volumes seeing everybody here tonight that is here for Daniel Latimer as our fire chief. So thank you, Daniel.
So here is your 15-year pin. He does want to have a private ceremony for his penning, but we do have it here. It's, you know, you talk about how humble he is. He's still wearing his deputy chief badge, but we appreciate you. Thanks for everything, and now it's up to you to say a few words.
All right, so I will try to keep this short, and everybody's gonna laugh at that. But I don't have a time limit, so I know how they get this. This is awesome. But I will start off, you know, thanks, as Ben said, and all I should do is I choke it up. I'll get passionate when I start talking about my family, whether it's the blood or it's the guys, girls back there, no girls tonight, just all guys. But anyways, I would like to say thank you to my family, to my parents, because they were the ones that started teaching me at a young age about my faith. And being persistent, relentless, and never giving up, and I watched that from them and my grandparents, and then my wife. She has put up with me for a long time. Yeah, just like my parents. I mean, these guys back here know me. I grew up with them. There was a road to get to where I'm at now. It wasn't always this way. So then my kids, Madison, Grady, they have been so giving of my time, because there's been a lot of nights and weekends, as Ben said, and we try not to speak about that, but there've been a lot of times that I don't get to be with them, but they know every single person on our fire department roster, because we truly pray for each of them and their families. And so when we are home, they know that is religious by that. We truly, our family knows these guys, and so we truly love them. And so there's a lot of names right off. And so then the next piece, that, very thankful for that, but thankful for our leadership in the city, for our prior city manager, Charles Cox, he's back there. He's gracious with his presence. And so with him, at the time, Ben Williamson and Brian Beasley, our HR director, and then John Land as well, their team really supported our fire department. We were going through some different times a couple of years ago, and so they partnered up with all of us, our fire department, and then made some changes that needed to be made and got us on this road where we're at now, on this journey. And so without them, we wouldn't even be standing here tonight, and there would be a lot of people probably not even here in this room. So thank you all very much for that. And then next to the council, the mayor, I mean, they've been 100% supportive of us. Every single one that you see up here, I want the residents to understand that, every single council member up there has supported the fire department. There is no doubt. There are so many of you and the residents that I've got to run on or be a part of and know over the last 15 years, and growing up here on these streets of Farmers Branch. And I just, I appreciate y'all's support of our fire department, because the most important thing is not tonight about me. They think, oh, Daniel tries to deflect it, but it's not. When you turn around, the tension shouldn't be on me, it's on them. That's where it's at. Those are the guys that spend time away from their family every third day. They go in and they give their lives every third day for people they don't know. And so you seem to get emotional, because these are the brothers that I grew up with, and, you know, they were very forgiving at times, because, like I said, it was a journey here. Started here when I was 23 years old, and I wasn't the same person that I am today. And so every single one of them had some kind of help in my life and guidance. And so a lot of them here have been like brothers, they are brothers of mine. So I give them a lot, because like Ben said, they don't get to see a lot of that. They get to see a little bit of it. But man, I will fight for them, because that's what they deserve. They deserve to be paid the highest. They deserve all the resources we give them. They deserve the best fire trucks, because that's their job, is to respond to our residents. So I just want y'all to know that. So before you clap for me, we end this thing, I just pray, I just hope that right now you would turn around and clap for them, because they are the ones that deserve the clap. So real quick, before I end something, this is something that God had really put on my heart years ago. And so we're going through a really hard, hard time in our department. And so through that, there was a scripture that was given to me. And at the time, I really didn't understand what it was about, but through this journey that we've been on in the last four years, I got to be mad, man. It's been something I've held on to. Usually I wrote on my board, a lot of people, was that? And I would say it. So I'm gonna read it to you, and this has been something that's been true to me and for our fire department, it's something we prayed over, and it's Philippians 2, 2 through 5, and it says, "So I'm asking you, my friends, that you be joined together in perfect unity with one heart, one passion, and united in one love. Walk together with one harmonious purpose, and you will fill my heart with unbounded joy. Be free from pride-filled opinions, for they will only harm your cherished unity. Don't allow self-promotion to hide in your hearts, but in authentic humility, put others first and view others as more important than yourselves. Abandon every display of selfishness. Possess a greater concern for what matters to others instead of your own interest. And consider the example that Jesus, the Anointed One, has set before us. Let His mindset become your motivation." And so that's something that was there the last couple of years as we've gone through this journey, and that's what you have in this fire department. You have a unity, one fire department. It is one team. We try to do that here at our same staff, with the whole city staff. We are truly one team, and I just can't tell the guys thank you enough for giving me another chance and let me get to be a part of y'all's team again. So I appreciate y'all. Thank y'all very much.
And now to really take this up a notch, it's time for the city manager's report on items of community interest from grandfather John Land.
Do I really have to follow them? Can I get Daniel Latimer to read the city manager's report? All right. Help spread the hope this month by joining our citywide peanut butter drive. We're teaming up with a North Texas food bank to collect regular jars of peanut butter by September 30th. We have two weeks left, so you can just drop them off at any of our four city facilities, including City Hall, or visit ntfb.org/peanutbutterdrive. We have a crowd of canines at the animal adoption center, and they need your help. Last month, we took in almost twice the number of strays compared to any previous year. They need forever homes. Share on social media, stop by to visit, or foster a four-legged friend. Visit the AAC website or in person at 3727 Valley View Lane, or feel free to call 972-919-8770. Have you taken up the challenge of our city's art scavenger hunt? It's a fun freeway to learn more about the amazing art in Farmers Branch. Entry forms and clue sheets are still available at the city's website or at the recreation center's front desk. Completed forms must be submitted to the recreation center by October 3rd. Plan a party, invite the police, and get to know your neighbor. That's the idea behind National Night Out on Tuesday, October 4th. Farmers Branch first responders want to meet the citizens they serve when there is not an emergency in progress. Anyone planning a party should register by calling 972-919-9304. And we want to extend a warm welcome to the newest member of our extended Farmers Branch family, my granddaughter Adeline Renee Ariola is born. 3:43 AM on September 15th, 2022. She's eight pounds and 20 inches. She and her parents are doing fine and sleeping well at Fort Campbell in Kentucky. And as always, you can sign up for City E News at farmersbranchtx.gov. Mayor, that concludes my report.
Thanks, Cramps. Next is our citizen comments. There's a three-minute time limit for each citizen to speak. Anyone wishing to speak shall be courteous and cordial. No disparaging remarks directed at any member of the city council or staff will be allowed. First up is former mayor John Dodd.
Honorable mayor and honorable city council and staff and honorable citizens of Farmers Branch. I am so glad I got to follow the chief, because I've went to his university, East Texas State University, Texas A&amp;M, and I married a girl from East Texas, Sulfur Springs, which is right next door to Greenville. And so I know how to say, yes, ma'am, and yes, dear. But tonight, I have a special thing I'd like to recognize. Farmers Branch is globally known, world-renowned. There has been an event in the last few days that y'all might be following, Queen Elizabeth. Mayor Glancy, will you please tell us about the invitation Farmers Branch had?
Well, part of a Sister City program, we got started with real early on, and my Francis and I, and we were private citizens at the time, and they came over, and the city did such a wonderful job of entertaining these people from England, that they really wanted to do something in return for us. And so when we went back over and we made real good personal friends with a couple that came and stayed with us, and so as a result of that, we went back over and they sent this invitation and came and said, you were going to go to a reception with the queen. And I didn't think much of it at the time. I thought, you know, Great Britain wasn't that big a country, and she'd been queen for 30 years, she'd probably been everywhere, but she'd never been to this city that we were twinned with. And when we went over there, and it was quite an experience to be in the presence of the Queen of England. It's so much different. And I don't know if you've ever been in the presence of the President of the United States, but it's like a circus, and I mean, the paparazzi, and there's media and all kinds of stuff. But this is a very private end of thing. There was one person with her as a security person in a reception for that. But it was such a great experience that we had, and so, and John was a part of that experience. So it's, and it was on June, June 5th of 1981, and so it was one of the great experiences of our lives to do that.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor. And to follow that up, our first ladies of Farmers Branch, Frances Glancy and Betty Ann Dodd were there. Now, what was interesting was Betty and I had to learn to courtesy and how to bow. And when the queen, uh, came, the lady in waiting came first. And then the sheriff of Nottingham. How many people know why the sheriff of Nottingham is important? Because that was the sheriff that was after Robinho. And when I had the privilege of talking directly with the queen, I held her hand. Now, they had to wear gloves and so forth, and they had to wear a hat. But when I looked into her eyes, you've never seen such calm, such peace, and such grace. She is definitely the heart of the world. And one of the interesting things is what makes it so interesting is when we ever have our events center, this is an inauguration type. We have the Queen of England and the invitation. And more so than that, how many of you remember Glenna Grimmer? Raise your hand. Well, Glenna Grimmer sculptured a bronze blue bonnet that we presented to the Queen of England. So there is a Farmers Branch blue bonnet at the queen's house. Oh, castle, I'm sorry. I'm, I just live in a house. But, uh, the other thing that was interesting that I'd like to do at this time to commemorate the royal experience of Farmers Branch. Tomorrow, Congress is doing it, but Farmers Branch has always been ahead of what's happening in Washington. We're Main Street, USA, and we're proud of it. But I would like to present, Mayor, would you help me? Present a rose to each of the council members. And this is regal, is that the correct term, regal? Sure, okay, royal rose. And I want to commemorate Farmers Branch had high tea due to significant others. There you are. And I don't think I want out. They do recognize law over better.
It's a good thing.
Yeah. Oh, boy. Take the basketball. And here you go, John Lamb, I know you've got beautiful hair. And here for, you know, whoever. And here, you're a natural. And guess what? I know you've got a pretty face. And I know you, but this is to commemorate the ceremony for Queen Elizabeth and the Queen. And while we had the opportunity to kiss the Queen of Elizabeth. Oh, finally, you want to pay the girl who's hanging over there while you were talking? Yes. And they gave you, and we took a bath. And you all realize that the hotel over here where, what was the guy?
Thirty, thirty seconds, Mayor. Into the microphone, Mayor. We all need to hear this.
Thank you, Mayor, for having me out.
Thanks, Mayor, Mayor.
Mayor, I would like to do a little commercial for our Sister City program. Uh, I think it's a wonderful program. We got involved in it and, um, met so many people, uh, through that program. And it's a wonderful opportunity to go to a country and actually live with, with a family and, and learn. It's so much different than what you get just going as a tourist or that type of thing. You know, and, and one of the things that brought home to me is we would have people in our home from these countries and they would keep you up until all hours of the evening to talk to you, discussion. You want to know what you thought about this and what you thought about that. When finally I said to one of them, I said, why do you care what I think about that? And they looked at me so dumbfounded and they said, you don't understand. America public opinion is what governs the world. Not your political leaders, not your media. It's what the American people think. And that stayed with me a very long, all those years of, of what influence American public opinion has on the world. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Next up is Lisa Rigby.
Hi there, Mayor, City Council. Thank you. I am Lisa Rigby, the executive director for Woven Health Clinic. Woven Health is a nonprofit healthcare clinic that was founded 30 years ago by Chapel Hill United Methodist Church and Webb Chapel United Methodist Church, along with then-mayor David Blair. We provide affordable, not free, quality, comprehensive primary care. Everybody needs healthcare. We treat diabetes, high blood pressure, asthma, sick care visits. We also provide mental health treatments for depression and anxiety, which by the way, are skyrocketing right now. We work to help our patients prevent disease because diabetes, in addition to not being a pleasant disease, is an expensive disease. Thirty-eight percent of Americans are prediabetic and don't even know it. And we work to let them know it and stop it. We help our patients get affordable lab work, vaccines, pharmaceuticals. And I want to emphasize, this is not a handout. Our patients pay a low-cost copay. We serve over 1,200 Farmers Branch residents for over 5,000 visits a year. During COVID, we launched a first responder program for both the fire, the police, and the city employees in Farmers Branch and our other cities. And we prioritized COVID testing. If you remember, it was taking five to seven days to get a COVID test. We had gotten equipment, we could do it onsite in 45 minutes, and we prioritized any of those first responders. They got COVID testing, COVID care kits, and immediate telemed appointments. We keep Farmers Branch residents healthy. We keep the patients that can't pay out of the Dallas Medical Center ER. So when patients go because they need, they're not able to afford to get into a doctor for their diabetes or high blood pressure, they go to ER, they can't pay it. That goes on all the citizens. We're the ones who are really paying for that, the most expensive type of care. So for the last 12 years, we were really lucky. We had this federal program that, uh, the whole state of Texas had, and we were getting at the end of about 500,000 a year. So that enabled our cities really and everyone else to pay a little bit, right? Well, unfortunately, the federal government ended that program this year for the entire state of Texas. That is over 1.3 billion dollars out of the state. For us, it's 500,000. Our board knew this might happen, so we were working all last year on a new revenue plan. You know, what can we do to be sustainable? I'll tell you what we learned. We do not want to be 100% reliable on the federal government. We do not want to have to rely on the state government, and I do not want to have to rely on city funding.
You can finish.
Thank you. However, it will take us 12 minute, uh, 12 minutes, 12 months, I wish it was 12 minutes. 12 months to build this new model. We reached out to the city of Capel and to Farmers Branch to ask for one-time bridge funding to help us keep the doors open while we implement this new model. We do have commitments from the city of Capel and our Carrollton clinic. We've also reached out and Carrollton is doing one-time funding for their clinic. Without this bridge funding, the Farmers Branch 30-year-old clinic may close. Or we may have other funding that's going to push out the Farmers Branch residents that need healthcare. It is strongly possible we'll have to send discharge letters to 1,200 patients. I know this is late in the process and I apologize. You know, honestly, I'm very much a heads down. We're working on healthcare. Ninety-five cents of every dollar goes to healthcare. I know that I'm late in this ask, but I ask that you consider by bridge funding request to let us stay open for the next year, serving the residents of Farmers Branch. This new model, by the way, will allow us to serve more residents. A lot of these that have high deductible plans that need our services. So I ask that you please consider my request either now or in the near future. And I appreciate all the support, everything that you do. I appreciate all of you guys. You know, healthcare is hard. It's expensive and it's hard in Texas. And if you know, you probably know someone that struggled to afford or get care, and that's what we're here for. I love the comment that Farmers Branch is usually ahead of Washington, and we are doing innovative things. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Next up is Tommy Hilkema.
Tommy Hilkema, 2581 Brandywine. I'm here to speak for the silent people who don't get to come here and appreciate the servant leadership that our council provides. And by the way, nobody gets paid. There aren't many professions in this world that you would give so much time and through the whole budget process, take so much abuse and still show up for work. So I appreciate that. And in any budget process, going through this in the corporate world, there are always factions that want something. So we didn't have people bark at the Bark Park, or snort at the senior center, or laud over the library because those are amenities. And when the council is, they're not looking District Four, District One, District, they're looking at the city and the amenities and the needs of the city. And I think that's one thing citizens need to open their minds to, that it's not about your district, it is about the city. And how do we serve all of the citizens? And how do we attract more citizens into this wonderful place that is a city in a park? And maintain that and be kind and caring to one another. And when we speak, we speak in kindness, out of concern, not be abrasive and abusive to people who are servant leaders. I thank you for your service, as many residents do that never get to come up here and say that. So thank you.
Next is James Lockridge.
James Lockridge, 11771 Mar-a-Lago.
You lift the microphone up a little. Thank you.
Mr. Die, I'm back again. It wasn't too long ago that we had a meeting, uh, what, a month ago, maybe longer? Where you asked me to, uh, hold back, not come to city council so you could talk to city council, come to a resolution. Not one time have I seen anything on the agenda to discuss my issue. Not once with any of y'all. Now, guys, I'm going to be honest with you. If somebody goes out here and runs through this building and breaks the glass, you're going to make them pay for it, correct? 100%, you're going to make them pay for it. If a fire truck gets hit by a car, you're going to make that person pay for it. Somebody runs into y'all's car or your house, you're going to make somebody pay for it. Well, guys, you admitted to fault. You admitted to doing damage to my properties. You admitted to costing me money. Now, Mr. Die, we've had this discussion with Mr. Cox and Mr. Land. So I'm asking you again today, what is the issue? Do you really have that big of a hard-on for me? Because I guarantee you, I don't like it. I'm done playing games with y'all. It's time for this city council to do something. I mean, we're going to give money over here, we're going to give a grant over here, we're going to build a $5 million park. I mean, it's to a point that I'm, I'm tired of it. A city manager drives my fields every single week? I mean, what do we have a code compliance officer for? I mean, we have a city council member's backyard that's been on the books for two years. Nothing's got done yet, just went by there today. He's done a little bit maybe in the front, nothing in the back. Where's that at on your app? If you look on the app, there's nothing about that on the app. So, I mean, are we going to pick on the farmer? Are we going to be discriminatory to one person? City attorney's sitting right here. He hasn't reached out to me one time. He should be giving y'all some advice, some real good advice. Because I'm telling you, you've got a lot of people, not just citizens and residents, but people from the Capitol watching your actions and what y'all are doing as city council people and members. It's time for the city council to stand up. Now, the code of ethics was broke at the last city council meeting with me. And not one city council member will do anything about it, not a one. And they should. Don't be scared to stand up and say you broke the code of ethics, because you did. Do something, hold people accountable. I don't care who you, whose feelings you hurt. If you're wrong, you're wrong. If you're right, you're right. But today's the day, guys. As city council member, if you know somebody broke the code of ethics, you need to fix it. You need to file a grievance and see where it goes. But today is ridiculous. I'm tired. John Lamb should not be driving my fields every week telling me my grass is too tall. Mow this, pick up this. It's not his job. His job is to be the city manager. He has a code compliance officer supposed to do it. Make it happen. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up is Vicki Harrison.
Vicki Harrison, 3706 Ridge Oak Way, Farmers Branch. Done? Okay. So I think it was really important what the fire chief had to say about gather together and the lady, I'm sorry, I don't know your name, about being respectful. What I want to talk about is why the city council seems to have a culture of not being respectful of one another. And it's an embarrassment and it's a very poor example when you have council members say, or, or employees of the city say to a council person that they can't use a word. You can't use the word buy-in. You can't use the word sell. It's especially offensive because those are the very same words members of the council used when they were trying to prepare to sell a $25 million park bond. So it applies to one person, not to another. Phrases like, well, I've already told you, but if you need me to, I guess I can go over it again. If you're, if ever been a teacher, you don't say things like that. It's rude. It's disrespectful. They wouldn't have asked the question if they didn't want an answer. That is really over the top. Then, at the September 13th study session, as well as the May 31st council meeting, a council person yelled at another council member and interrupted them, but there was no action taken. So citizens are told to be respectful? What about the council members being respectful? What about accusing someone of flip-flopping because they took the time to study an issue and then had a different opinion? That's what you're supposed to do, is due diligence when a matter is presented to the city council. It's absurd that you would assert that a city council member has to put, run by you statements that they make to their constituents. They have freedom of speech. Those kinds of topics coming up in study sessions and council sessions are not appropriate. You're not gathering in unity. It's not the citizens that have been rude. You've been rude and disrespectful to one another, especially new council members when you say, you aren't here, you don't know. Well, they're here now and they represent 40% of the population. So those, again, are inflammatory, snide remarks. So I would ask you to follow the lead of your new fire chief. Perhaps he could have a work session with you to teach you how to live in unity. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Next is Pat Edmundston.
Good evening.
Good evening. The residents voted you and you to represent us. The vote was spoken meeting after meeting. You have received email after email, gotten phone call after phone call, yet you have not listened. It appears that you will pass this budget, not what the taxpayers asked for. I will say to the residents of this city, elections have consequences. Remember this the next time you vote. Know who you vote for.[645.87][645.87](APPLAUSE)
Next is Mike Harrison. You had two. One for citizen comments and one for the budget. But if you want to hold off, you can. I mean, it doesn't matter to me. You have the opportunity there.
Mike Harrison, 3706 Ridge Oak Way, Farmers Branch. Mr. Mayor of City Council. Tax rate SB2. The City Council has demonized SB2, which is Texas Legislature passed to protect citizens from being unfairly burdened with cities raising property tax rates annually year to year. In this, depending on that revenue stream, SB2 provides three features. Number one, lowering the tax rate, a taxing unit can adopt without voter approval and requiring a mandatory election to go above the lower rate. Number two, making numerous changes to the procedure by which the city adopts a tax rate. Number three, making several changes to the property tax process. City Council and the Finance Director have deliberately avoided the issue, and their insistence on maintaining the current tax rate is they want to utilize a part of SB2, a component that included within the voter approval rate calculation is a new term called unused incremental rate. The unused incremental rate can be used to increase the voter approval rate depending on the tax rates adopted by the city in the previous three years. Keeping the rate the same allows them to bypass 3.5% rule and raise taxes more without voter approval. So following their money grab this year, they're planning far greater expenditures, yet refusing to curtail spending. Remember the 20% increase we've heard. When the subject comes up, we're all told it's too complicated for us to comprehend. Let me explain it. The voter approval rate is known revenue maintenance and operations rate times 1.035% plus the current debt service rate. Included with voter approval rate calculation SB2 is a new term called the unused incremental rate. This rate can be used to increase the voter approval rate depending upon the tax rates adopted by the city in the previous three years. In essence, the unused incremental rate is a three-year rolling sum of the difference between the adopted tax rate and the voter approval rate. Put differently, the city has the ability to bank any unused amounts below the voter approval rate to use for up to three years rolling. Conversely, if the city adopts the voter approval rate all years between 2020 and 2022, the unused incremental rate would be zero. Under no circumstances can this rate be less than zero. The legislature stated goal in relation to the unused incremental rate is to discourage taxing units from adopting a rate equal to 3.5%.
You can wrap it up.
Bottom line is, if you could get a tax decrease, it sure would be much appreciated.
Next up is Cheryl Howerton.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. My name is Cheryl Howerton. I live at 3657 Morning Star Circle. Recently, I submitted an open records request to the City of Farmers Branch requesting all documents concerning the establishment and the changes to the present of the Orin Good Park at the corner of Tom Field and Valley View Lane from 1978 to the present. Received the documents back, but only goes back as far as 2019. Where is the rest of the documents? Where is the due diligence? There's nothing that was said about the establishment of the park, that the park was for the blind and children with handicapping conditions, or that the name of the Lions Club was associated with the park. Orin Good was the second mayor of Farmers Branch, and I believe this park needs to remain recognizing him and for the children with disabilities. It was, he was honored after his death in 1974. I've often asked, why is a lion's name removed from the park signage? There's no data. There's no documentation. Where is that documentation? Where is the due diligence? I received this flyer from the City of Farmers Branch, and it talks about funding by the State of Texas Parks and Wildlife. Then I have to ask the question, all this information that was submitted, where is this, was this information submitted about the history of this park? That the park is being turned from the primary use, the development, into a park which they're calling All Children's Park? But I haven't seen any evidence of that. The name change is wiping out the history in the park that was created. In 1979, the park was created to serve the blind, the wheelchair and disabilities, and then included all children. This is reverse of what's being done today. I have to bring up that Al Wagner served the City of Farmers Branch. He retired from the Police Department. He also served the Lions Club. So in two capacities, I guess he did double dipping in providing a place for the children to play. I never wanted to be said of the Farmers Branch Mayor and City Council that the Orin Good Park for children with disabilities was replaced with a neon glitz and their memory was wiped away.
Next up, and last up for citizen comments, is Margaret Young.
My name is Margaret Young, 3412 Highland Meadow. Mayor Di, City Council members, I would first like to thank you for all your time and effort and service. You have no easy task. I hope you've had time to read the article I sent you entitled "A Tribute to Parks and Recreation: How Lucky Do You Feel?" I'm a product of the Tulsa, Oklahoma Parks and Recreation System. For that, I feel very lucky. I grew up in an impoverished neighborhood. My mother did ironings for people. My father worked in a foundry. We had no car. We rented our house. They each had an eighth-grade education. However, I lived within a mile of Owen Park, where the neighborhood kids and our families spent much of our time. Each year, I was given a new used swimsuit, tennis rackets and tennis balls, and many opportunities and experiences such as trips to museums, the library, zoo, circus, fishing derby even. We learned about nature. We caught crawdads in the creek and had picnics. We played in the playground equipment. We learned many new games and learned to cooperate and work together through the parks. All of this was afforded to us because we had a city that cared about its citizens and its community. I was indeed lucky. Fast forward now to Farmers Branch. We are called a city and a park because our past leaders cared enough to give us an outstanding park system such as the Senior Center, Historic Park, Dog Park, Rose Garden, Frog Pond, Neighborhood Parks, John Burke Nature Center. Tonight, I hope you are once again, will once again, support our staff, our park board, and the families in Farmers Branch by supporting the Event Center and Hoya Park. I feel very lucky to have lived in Farmers Branch, the city in a park. How lucky do you feel? On an added note, another important benefit that the city has given is to the Police Department. I support our outstanding Police Department by being part of, excuse me, part of the Citizens on Patrol program. Continuing to offer many parks and recreation opportunities and activities helps to keep our young people in a safe environment and off the streets. Again, I feel very lucky. How lucky do you feel?
Next is our consent agenda. Do I have a motion?
Mayor will be happy to make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
A second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Merritt, a second by Councilmember Williams. Is there any more discussion?
Yes, Mayor, I have a question.
Go ahead.
I have a question on H5, the 1820 Whittington. So I was just hoping to get a little bit of an update on what you would expect the timeline to be for construction to begin, what that process may look like, and then when you would expect maybe for the project to end. And obviously, I know you may not have the exact dates, but if you can kind of give us a rough estimate just for the residents who are watching.
Good evening. Michael Beatty, 1800 Valley View, Farmers Branch. Pleasure to be here again. I've got to learn to dress up, though. I got caught at Prosper the other night, too. I got to find a tie somewhere. We have been given a grading release. To go ahead and get started, we actually have bid that out, and because of fuel costs and everything else, we're still arm wrestling. I'm hoping to make that release within the next week or two, like pick the guy and he shows up. Our civil plans are about 80% complete. We'll be submitting those to Public Works. As soon as we're approved, we'll start construction immediately, usually from first submittal to lot deliveries, about 10 to 12 months. I'll preorder everything. You might see a giant pile of pipe show up one day. You know, that's what we're trying to do, make sure we have the materials on site. Our builder will be seeking permit release where we have fire protection, like life safety along Whittington, as soon as we can get to that point in the project. So all together, we're probably 20, 24 months away from the first residents being able to move in.
Okay. And my understanding is that the, there's going to be some work going on at the, on the park area before...
Our obligation, yes, sir. Our obligation is to deliver the 20 parking spaces in the new approved location as part of our paving work, which are in our plans. And then we'll be building the trail, planting 35 trees, 36 trees, somewhere there, in the approved locations. We submitted those plans. I think we're waiting to hear back from the Teague, Nolan, Perkins, like just to confirm a final thing there. But whatever we're directed to go do, we'll do when we build the streets on the sidewalk alignment. And the irrigation, and the public art display. We have that pedestal, and actually, if you want to see a potential sample, we've got it stored over at the boardwalk right now.
Thank you. And then, can you confirm who will be maintaining the park once it's built?
City Park.
Understood. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
No further questions, Mayor.
Any more discussion? Seeing none, I will ask you all to mark your vote at this time. Motion passes unanimously. Next is our public hearings. I1, conduct a public hearing to consider adopting a property tax rate of .589 and take appropriate action. We don't have a staff presentation for this one tonight. Is there any discussion or question from council at this time? Seeing none, I'll go ahead and open it up for the public hearing. Before I call on the first name, I do want to recognize that many of you have signed up to speak. A lot of you have signed up under the J category, which will happen not on this one, not on the next one, but on the third one on the list from here. So I'm going to allow you all to speak at that time. We have one person signed up to speak to I1. That is Betty Sapinski. Yeah, I think she's... Okay. All right. We have no one else sign up to speak to this item. So with that, I'll look for a motion to close the public hearing and take action. Actually, let's close the public hearing first and then take action. Oh, we just need to close it? Okay. Yeah, just a motion to close the public hearing.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
A second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Merritt, a second by Councilmember Williams. Any more discussion? I'll ask you all to mark your vote at this time. Motion carries, 4 to 1. Next is I2. Conduct a public hearing to consider adopting ordinance number 3760, amending Chapter 2, Section 2-581B of the Code of Ordinances to provide that any employee of this city who is a member of the Texas Municipal Retirement System is eligible to retire and receive a service retirement annuity if the member has at least 20 years of credited service and take appropriate action. Mr. Beasley is here to answer any questions. Does council or have any questions for Mr. Beasley at this time? Or any discussion on this point? We have one person signed up to speak to this item. It was Betty Sapinski, but as we just learned, she has left the meeting. So with that, take a motion to close the public hearing and take action.
Mayor, I move to close the public hearing and approve adopting ordinance 3760.
I have a motion by Councilmember Williams.
Mayor, I'll second that motion.
I have a second by Councilmember Merritt. Is there any more discussion? Seeing none, I'll ask you all to mark your vote at this time. Motion carries unanimously. Next are our regular agenda items. We are going to have one presentation by staff, but that presentation is going to include all five of the items in our regular agenda. So I'm going to read all of those in. When it is appropriate, we will take action on them independently. So bear with me for one second. J1, consider adopting ordinance number 3759, amending the Farmers Branch Code of Ordinances Appendix A Fee Schedule related to the fees established pursuant to Chapters 86 Utilities, Articles 4, Service Rates and Billing Procedures, Sections 86-276A, Water Service Rates, Section 86-276B, Duplexes, Triplexes, Quadplexes, and Apartment Houses or Multi-Family Dwellings per Unit to address a temporary rate and take appropriate action. J2 will be consider adopting ordinance 3754, approving and adopting a budget plan for the fiscal year beginning October 1st, 2022, and ending September 30th, 2023, providing that expenditures for said fiscal year shall be made in accordance with such budget, appropriating and setting aside the necessary funds out of the general and other revenues of the City of Farmers Branch for said fiscal year for the maintenance and operation of various departments and for various activities and improvements of the city, appropriating the various amounts required for such budget, amending the 2021-22 adopted budget, providing for an effective date, and take appropriate action. J3 is consider approving Resolution number 2022-098, ratifying the property tax revenue increase reflected in the fiscal year 2022-23 budget, and take appropriate action. J4, consider adopting ordinance number 3755, accepting the tax year 2022 certification of appraisal role in accordance with Section 26.04B of the state property tax code, and to levy and adopt the tax rate for the fiscal year 2022-23, tax year 22, and take appropriate action. And J5, consider adopting ordinance number 3762, providing for a dividend from the surplus revenue from the general fund to the taxpayers of the city, and take appropriate action. Mrs. Evans-Jones.
Thank you, Mayor. Sherrell Evans-Jones, Director of Finance for the City. My comments will cover all five of these items that were just read in. J1 represents an update to Appendix A for basically one change, and that is the... J1 represents an update to Appendix A for basically one change, and that is the reduction of that water base rate for residential customers to a rate of $10.99 per month on a one-time basis for this upcoming fiscal year, beginning from billing cycles on or after October 1st and concluding September 30th, 2023. J2 is an item in adopting the 2022-23 budget, so next year's budget, and amending the 2021-22 budget, so this year's budget. Included in the agenda items in your packet was a memorandum for your review outlining the changes between those budgets. We have had some meetings and conversations to talk through the proposed budget and the changes from council members as suggested. Those have been incorporated into the document. So what you have before you is that memorandum outlining any changes, especially related to those two budgets. J3 ratifies the property tax rate, the property tax revenue increase. J4 accepts the certification of the property tax appraisal role, levies and adopts the property tax rate of 0.589. You've heard me talk about that tax calculation and that tax rate calculation. Included in your packet at J4 are the details for that long calculation and how it comes together. You're welcome to review it in its entirety. In compliance with all laws and regulations, the information was provided to the Dallas Morning News regarding the notice of the 2022 tax year for proposed property taxes. And lastly, J5 provides for a dividend to all property taxpayers from the surplus revenues of the general fund in the amount of $1,600,333... Sorry, $1,600,333 and 300... Ah! 1,633,300. Yay!
Thank you for the support.
Or the equivalent of a 2-cent property tax rate reduction to all property tax holders, all property holders. This disbursement will be returned to property owners on or before December 31st, 2023. We talked through, we considered that timing to be as close as possible to when many taxpayers may be making their payments in January. We will work through the details for exactly how that payment will happen, and I anticipate making an update to council and to the public, so they will know what to expect with that payment. This has been a very long process with this budget season. It started in January 2022 with council workshops to talk about the strategic plans in the form of that retreat that was held at Fire Station 2. We then moved into kind of an internal phase of developing the budget with department directors and workshops to fine-tune our internal process of gathering information, internal department meetings in May. In July, we moved forward with receiving that valuation that happens from an external entity, the Dallas County Central Appraisal District, the appraisal of the property tax, excuse me, of the property values. That was provided to us on the 25th of July, and we were able to turn a draft to council and provide that to you four business days later on the 29th in the form of a full budget. In August, we held our budget retreat and a number of council meetings and internal meetings to talk through any details, answer any questions. More of that same thing during September, public hearings, and even a special call meeting. There have been probably seven or so different slide decks that I remember making throughout this process to try to help answer questions or explain things or provide details as best to respond to any questions you might have had throughout the process. In conclusion, I want to say just a thank you to the team that has been my rock through this whole process. Thank you to our finance team in its entirety. I'm thinking of and I'm kind of seeing different faces along the way. Tammy Zimmerman, thank you. To our controller, Tammy Zimmerman, and our super-capable accounting team that provides a lot of great details and helps the engine continue to go. Mark Woodward, our guy that manages all of the CIP detail and all of the projects. I'm really thankful for him and his work. Leslie Smith, our customer service supervisor, for her work in helping to work through all the particulars and ensuring that we were ready to go and had questions answered with respect to the water rate reduction proposal. To our department teams, and specifically our department heads, I have felt your hand on my back this whole time, and I cannot thank you enough for your continued support. I sincerely thank you. To our council, thank you for your willingness to understand a complicated budget process, leaning into facts, for proposing solutions to accompany your critique, for providing sincere thanks and praise along the way. I'm thankful for the questions, the details, and all of the steps along the way. I want to thank my family. This has been a difficult process this time, and I want to especially thank my family for their love and support. I want to thank my brother, my brother John. Thank you. And my last and special, I actually, you know, I know we are here to talk about the budget and we represent different things, but I need some crowd participation with this, I really, really do, because we have a very, very special person who has done so much to make this process come together. Suzanne Pritchard, our budget manager. This don't happen without her. This doesn't happen without her. She is, she will celebrate her 35th year with this city. 35 years of providing fantastic service, providing her talent. So this January, she'll enter her 35th year with the city. I'm thankful for her. She's probably home trying to feel better because we were both, I think this has been the in sickness and in health budget, because she went down, I got up, she's better, she's not, you know. So can we do this, please? No, 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 that's not what I want. I want you to inhale and exhale a collective, thank you Suzanne Pritchard. One, two, three, take it in. Exhale. Thanks Suzanne Pritchard. Aw, she'll love that. Hope that makes you feel better. I hope you're watching from home, Suzanne, and I hope you feel better. With that, that's all I have. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Ms. Evans-Jones, thank you very much for your presentation and your words. Regardless of how it goes from here, I want to say thank you to you and your team for your effort, for your patience. Your grace is, we have been up and down, all over the place, and your ability to take our collective thoughts is wide-ranging as they might have been, to put them into a cohesive package that we are able to understand and evaluate as we look forward to this next year for the city of Farmers Branch. And none of that would have been possible without you, without the long weekends, without the late nights, without putting together various scenarios that we wanted to see, particularly on how different things were going to play out. And you did that wonderfully, and, you know, it's always been my experience, at least in these last six years, that every budget you've put together has been above reproach, and that is characterized every single January and February when I present you with an award for a tremendous and stellar budget of excellence. And I anticipate that you'll get another one. So I want to say from all of us, you know, thank you. I know it's been trying, it has been difficult, but you stuck with us, and, you know, I just admire you and what you do and what you mean to the city, so thank you very much. Yeah, she deserves an applause. So before I move on to the citizen comments, does anyone on council have any comments or questions for Ms. Evans-Jones or for our collective group? Councilmember Jackson.
Mayor, I've got some comments about this year's budget. I'd like to make those after we hear from residents.
That's totally fine.
Can we do that? Thank you very much.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. No one else? Well, then we will jump right in. First up to speak is Colleen Ruline. Hopefully I said that correctly. If not, I tried. Just name an address, please.
I'm sorry?
Just name an address, please.
Colleen Ruline, and I reside at 3223 Whispering Oak. And I am here tonight because we have a very unique homeowners community. And some of you who are newer to the board, to the council, may not be familiar with our uniqueness, but we tend to get left out when people are making plans for the town, the whole city. And we are equal taxpayers, and we are homeowners, we are not a multifamily system. In the early '70s, our development in the city of Farmers Branch was approved by the then-sitting council and the zoning, planning and zoning. At that time, we, the developer was not required to individually meter for water our homes. And in the recent 10 years, 20, 15 years, we've been talking about this, and how we either get us individually metered or how we get recognized within the city, because we're not on that city role, we don't get water bills, so we don't get the information put in water bills. So there's things that we're, we don't, services we don't get from the city that other neighborhoods do. I believe the water rebate should not be questionable, that we are eligible. We are 155 homeowners. I believe that there is a discrepancy in the records that DCAD sent versus what the roles are with the water department, and I have supplied you each with a list of 155 addresses, so that that can be taken into consideration. We pay our homeowners' bills, for those who don't know, we have communal meters. So we pay our water bills through the HOA, which has put a responsibility on the HIA, HOA, to be a quasi-governmental group. Therefore, we need fair representation here. 28% of our dues are for water. And I don't know where we are included in this household rebate. And so I'm asking, well, we are requesting that you, that you do this in an equitable way, since we are not multifamily, and since we do individually pay for water, that we be afforded the same treatment as any other homeowner in the city of Farmers Branch. So I want to thank you. I'm really counting on you to, to keep this, all of you, in consideration, even though we're not in your district.
Awesome. Thank you. Mark Amen? Amen? Next up is James Lockridge.
Guys, I've got to go to a bunch of city council meetings with other cities, doing, watching study sessions and the budget. I'm not a real numbers guy, but after the last meeting we had on the budget, I'm disappointed that it came down to blows with the city council. I'm not in approval, approve the budget tonight as it's going to be entered in. I think we could have done a better job, you know, with our mayor being gone and a meeting that was run like a bunch of kids that were in a sandbox fighting over a shovel. I think we could have done a lot better. I think we should have been more in tune on our budget a lot quicker, but at the same time, I just want everybody to know that I really feel bad for the citizens and residents of Farmers Branch, that they had to witness a city council at each other's throat. It was very disrespectful to everybody in Farmers Branch, and I would look and hope that going forward, that we could treat everybody with respect moving forward, and when new city council members have questions, that people don't jump down their throats. And same way with the new city council members, respect the older ones that have been here for a while, but, you know, I do think that we could have done a lot better job on the budget than what we did, and, you know, just to be able to go to these other cities and see how these cities, city council members intermingle with the finance director and with the mayor, and are really just in tune and in key. It just is really upsetting. And so I just wanted you all to know that I would hope, moving forward, that city council could find a way to stop fighting with each other and try to start getting along. And the one thing that I see the most up here is out of all the city council meetings lately, y'all have heard from residents and citizens, and guys, y'all ignored us. Y'all ignored the citizens of Farmers Branch like no tomorrow. An election will come up, and that's where it's going to get taken care of. But moving forward, I would ask y'all again, please, put your differences aside and work with each other, and not try to bite everybody's heads off. Mayor, thank you very much.
Good evening, Mayor and council and staff. Name's David Prince. My home is 9579 Crown Meadow in Frisco, but I have a business here at 14400 Midway Road in Farmers Branch. And I know I don't vote, but I did a quick tally. I think I get to have the opportunity to donate about $70,000 a year to the coffers of Farmers Branch through taxes and sales taxes and property taxes. So I hope my opinion matters, but I'm just trying to figure out why. Looking at history, you have budgets, very seldom go back down. Looking at history, the value of property always goes up and down. I'm not sure why y'all decided to spend every penny that you're getting in from basically phantom income. That's what this house prices are, they're just phantom income. They're going up, it's unrealized gain. And you're going to be taxing on that, and now you're getting a huge surplus coming into the city, and what did y'all do with it as opposed to getting it back to the citizens? You spent every penny of it and increased your budget by over 20%, where in the last two years, the budget went up about 5%, and one year, 3%, and the next year, a 20% increase in budget. So I'm kind of wondering, whenever value goes back down, are y'all going to reduce your budget? That's what I'm hoping, but typically, history says no, so you're going to end up having to increase your taxes. Mayor, I have to apologize, I misread the agenda. I should have been talking about the tax rate. You've already set the tax rate, and so the budget is, just depending on what y'all are going to spend, I just might ask that you reconsider some of the expenditures that you're looking at. But you're going to go in with savings into your general budget of almost 30-something percent, I think you're saying 32%, which is 12% above your general policy, your city policy of 20% of budget, so. I just ask that you really work hard on... So I just ask that you really work hard on looking at your budget expenditures and seeing if there's not a way of reducing the amount of money you're spending and not try to match the phantom income coming in, because these, you know, your taxpayers deserve a little bit more. And we have to realize, you have to look around what's happening in the U.S. economy. These taxpayers, these home residents, are looking at an increase in the utility cost of 50 to 100%. And on top of that, now you're going to increase, they're going to have some taxes that are going to be going up. The value of their homes are going up. Thank you for increasing the exemption. I think that's really going to be helpful to a lot of people. And I do thank you for your time. I know y'all labor of love, but I appreciate you taking the time to listen to me today.
Thank you very much.[646.79][646.79][applause] Next is Margaret Stidham.
Hello, I'm Margaret Stidham. I live at 3229 Whispering Oak. I'm also a part of the Oak Brook community. You may not always see me here, but I want to let you, and each of everyone, you know that I've been watching you on the internet. So I'm keeping up with all your actions, and there's probably many other people out there that are doing the same. There are many people here with comments, current concerns and suggestions. I know you're listening to us, but I hope that you actually hear what we are saying. Listening and hearing are two different things. I would prefer not to see the tax increase, because I believe that the tax increase, just like the last gentleman said, it's proposed to be a revenue surplus, and this is just too much, too high for too many people. Regarding the water rebate, I live in the Oak Brook community, which, as Colleen said, we are 155 homes. We are not individually metered, but we are paying for the water. If this council goes forward with the water rebate as the budget is written, our 155 homes will be left out of the rebate, and that's just not an equitable to, it's not equal for everybody else. We are a part of this community, too. Thank you very much.
Next is Todd Warren.
I'm here to speak for a lot of my friends in Brookhaven, to Councilman Driscoll and Merritt. We're very disappointed in the vote tonight. I know one thing, we had over 10 houses that went up $100,000 by DCAD last year in valuation, 17 that went up $200,000 last year. We had some up as high as $400,000. Our taxes are too high, and we're paying our fair share. We're very disappointed in what you two voted on tonight. Now, the thing that really is upsetting is that this is the third year of seven-figure surpluses for this city, and that's just too much, too much, too often. And the thing that's also frustrating, as I was doing a little research yesterday, was Richardson, Irving, Capel, Carrollton, Frisco, and Plano, and even liberal city of Dallas, all their councils faced the same thing you guys had, and they all voted to lower their property tax rate. So anyway, I'm very disappointed in everybody up there, and we will do something to try to resolve this issue, I promise you.[840.63][840.63][applause]
Next is Tim Robbs.
Good evening, council. Tim Robbs, 14541 Tammer's Lane. Born and raised in Dallas, knew quite a few people that have sat in your seats before, my father being one of them. Spent lots of time, probably over 10 years, here at this city. Worked harder in the city than he ever did in business for himself. And I told him that before he died. One thing that I don't understand is, I sat two weeks ago in this council meeting and listened to every citizen stand up in front of y'all and tell you they were not for the water bill rebate. But yet, you guys didn't listen at all. You just went ahead and you're deciding to go ahead and go with that. The tax rebate should have been put into place tonight, and I'm disappointed that it didn't. There's no reason why every citizen in Farmers Branch stood up here two weeks ago and told you they were against a water bill rebate, and you guys still pushed it through. That's all I have to say.[937.85][937.85][applause]
Next is Mike Harrison.
Mike Harrison, 3706 Ridge Oakway, Farmers Branch, Mr. Mayor, City Council. I had an eight-minute speech here that reduced down to three that I'm not going to give since I think everyone's reiterated all the talking points. The only thing I have to say is that over the last month, many people have shown up to express their desires, wishes on how to spend the money. Many people showed up, Ms. Omar, Councilman Omar's Town Hall, expressing the same things. And not a single one of y'all listened. Charity begins at home. The home is Farmers Branch. We have the citizens, we have the fire department, we have the police department, city services, many internal staff, all of which need equipment, training, and whatever else they need to do to support their functions on a day-to-day, month-to-month, year-to-year. Many of us expressed our desires not to give any money or any more monies to charity, that we need to get staffing for the fire and police, equipment, whatever training they need, and that money should have been done and provided to them first. We also have, we see internal issues. Each year, the city has to file with the county what the rates will be for the tax exemptions. This year, the city had to ask for an extension because they all missed it. Nobody filed the extension and what the rates would be. And there's things that we need to get in place in our own house first before we go out, and so I'll give monies to charities and parks and everything else. Thank you for your time. Good day.
That concludes the citizen comments. So with that, Mr. Jackson, I know you wanted to speak after the citizen spoke, so I will allow you to go first.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to speak to all of the regular agenda items, and we're going to vote on them individually, but I'm going to get my comments on all of them taken care of now. And I want to first, I want to start out with thanking the citizens for showing up. This is how you get things done. Unfortunately, tonight, I don't think we're going to get it done. It's kept me up at night. It's made me very frustrated. I'm very disappointed that it's difficult. It's a difficult working environment up here. Some of you commented on that. You have my commitment to try and make that better. I'm going to have to overcome some of my own emotions and frustrations to get there, but ask for your patience with that. But I want to talk about some of these budget items we have. This is a very complicated process, and I will not go tonight without saying, Sherrell, I know this is a very difficult and complex process. I know you and your team have worked hard, and thank you very much. We don't agree on all of it, but that doesn't mean that it wasn't hard work. When I look at 20 cities around us, we are only one of two cities out of those 20 that are not proposing or have not already reduced their tax rate. Why?
Why?
Carrollton, Plano was pointed out, Arlington reduced her tax rates by 2 cents. Carrollton has had eight consecutive years of tax rate reductions. One city reduced theirs by a little more than 7 cents and another by 5. Dallas lowered theirs by 2.75. This is not about the money, and I've said this a number of times before, it's about You can say that we are not those cities and that there are other factors to consider. Fair enough. How can Farmers Branch be so different? The grand emphasis from staff and council members has been to future-proof our city, to give future councils maximum flexibility to manage growth. It's like me telling my employer, I'm just going to go ahead and lock in my salary increases for the next few years because I expect to spend more money. That probably wouldn't go very well with my employer. There are 18 other cities around us that don't seem to be as concerned about SB2 as Farmers Branch is. Why, again, are we so different? Why doesn't resident input matter more? I've received numerous emails and phone calls. I've spoken with residents ad nauseam. I've only had one tell me they're okay with this budget. The overwhelming feedback was to reduce the tax rate. It's not what we're going to do tonight. I'm sorry. Does the fact that the state legislature created a mandate to address the abundantly increasing property tax revenue being collected by cities get your attention? It does mine. Reducing the tax rate in the face of SB2 is not only the right thing to do, but it's healthy. It's the right thing to do because it is an apples-to-apples approach to addressing the problem of rising and excessive tax revenue due to skyrocketing property value.[1328.65][1328.65][applause] Reducing the tax rate not only impacts near-term tax revenue, but it also has lasting impact. But it provides simple, understandable, direct relief. Every taxpayer benefits fairly. Businesses, homeowners. It's the right thing to do. Lowering the tax rate's healthy because it presses our city to do more with less, a very familiar corporate mantra.[1369.26][1369.26][applause] In challenging times, we as residents do more with less and simply we go without. Why should our city be any different? As individuals, we prioritize our needs above wants as resources shift. In this budget, we are prioritizing our public safety heroes with a 7% bonus split in half over the next year. I'm thankful for that. I know they are as well. But the bonus approach was proposed to avoid ongoing costs associated with increasing base pay as opposed to that lower cost of a one-time bonus. I understand that. I do. And I appreciate the council's support, particularly yours, Mayor, around the idea of going above and beyond for our public safety heroes. That's what they do for us every day. But I disagree with the bonus approach. I believe putting the full 2 additional percent in the base pay increase demonstrates a stronger commitment to our protectors, our lifesavers. I wish they were all still here tonight so I could tell them once again, thank you. This budget also allocates $230,000 of taxpayer money to Metrocrest Services to replace a federal grant program that has expired. Now, I sincerely appreciate and value what Metrocrest Services does in our community. I cannot, however, support the use of taxpayer dollars because I firmly believe that charitable contributions are an individual choice.[1492.74][1492.74][applause] I know that Metrocrest provides our city with services that our city cannot otherwise provide and that we share resources in a pool with other cities. But other cities are supporting with federal dollars. We've allocated our federal dollars to other projects. If this request is so critical to the fabric of our community, then we should look for a way to reduce some of the project spending under our federal ARPA funds to fully meet the needs of our community in need.[1538.13][1538.13][applause] Another nonprofit organization, Woven Health Clinic, you heard from Lisa Rigby, the executive director, earlier tonight, is here. They have a need for significant funding to continue to provide a very important community service, healthcare. Can't think of anything else maybe that's more important. Public safety and healthcare, right up there. Other cities are, other surrounding cities are answering the call, but again, they're using federal dollars. Farmers Branch? They're going to sit this one out because our federal dollars are already allocated to other projects. So where do you draw the line? Farmers Branch taxpayers cannot and should not shoulder the responsibility of replacing expired federal grants. So unless we can reduce some costs under the ARPA allocations to cover these requests, I can't support them either. And I'm sorry, Lisa.[1611.13][1611.13][applause] So Mayor, with that, I just want to finish by saying I cannot support tonight's budget.
Councilmember Jackson, thank you very much for your comments. Does anyone else have any comments at this time? Councilmember Roman.
Hey, Sherrell, I just have one question.[1662.74][1662.74][laughter] I know we've heard from some residents about the water credit, particularly those who live in the Oak Brook neighborhood. Is there anything we might be able to do even on a manual basis to make sure that they're accommodated in a similar way as other taxpayers?
It depends. We can take some, we can take a look at what is possible. I will explain this component and the reason that the credit was structured the way it was. We have over 8,000 different residential accounts, and we sought to find a way that we could provide relief systematically, like by changing the rate structure, because it is very difficult to go and touch 8,000 different accounts. And so, since we've been having that conversation about communities that have shared, you know, one large meter and there's a shared program, we've been having some conversations internally to try to figure out what is possible. And I'm happy to, and I'm happy to visit with any of the council members in the future to discuss that. I just don't have a specific answer for you right at this point.
Okay. Thank you. And then I also have a...
Can you finish with me?
I'm good.
Thank you.
Thank you. I also have some prepared remarks. First and foremost, I just want to thank all of the residents who have chosen to come and speak at the last city council meeting, those who attended my town hall in last week's work session, as well as those who have spoken today. Probably the most compelling speaker was a gentleman who emailed... Probably the most compelling speaker was a gentleman who emailed me stating that he felt this issue was so significant and important to he and his family that in lieu of him attending dialysis on Tuesday, he was going to come and speak. What makes America great and an incredible country to live in is that we can disagree with one another and not have any punitive implications from that. Let me assure you that I've been listening carefully. I hear the disagreement from all residents. My two have only heard one or two people that have stated that they're in support of the budget, that the overwhelming majority has taken the position that they're not in support of this budget. I know that this is a significant decision because of the impact it has on our city, staff, and our residents' pocket. Know that I have given fair and equal consideration to everyone's statements. I don't disagree with everything in the budget, but I disagree with critical parts of the budget that I have not received much support from residents on. I appreciate staff and other fellow council members who have worked hard towards finding a compromise, but it appears that we've not reached that yet. Simply put, I was elected by the people to work for the people, and it doesn't sit well with me that we still don't have resident buy-in on this budget. So in an effort to remain consistent with my platform that I personally ran on, I cannot support the current budget as presented and am prepared to vote. No.
Councilmember Roman, thank you very much for your remarks. Does anyone else have any comments at this time? Councilmember Merritt.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to make sure that everyone knows that I've been listening. I've heard the comments. I've attended sessions hosted by Brookhaven Neighbors. Todd and Beverly were so nice to host an event. I've heard this upfront. I want to know, I want everyone to know that one of my first observations is to be physically responsible with revenues and expenditures. This is not, you know, a definitive spend more or cut more mentality. It's really dealing with the amount of revenue that we do earn as a city through taxing as well as what we have to provide for our city amenities and services. This is not an à la carte city. You don't get to choose the parts and pieces that you like and the, and not pay for the things, and pay only for the things you do like. It's a very, it's, it's the way it's been for a long time across the entire United States. We're challenged to maintain and improve and where and whenever possible, the level of city services to both the residents and the businesses that they receive and expect. We have high expectations in this community for the level of services and the level of amenities. And I want everyone to understand that almost $24 million of that $174 million budget that has often been talked about as being a 20% increase is being funded, fully funded by the Dallas Stars in order to produce the new multi-sport facility in the downtown area here. It's almost 14%. So if you do the simple math, 14% out of 20 leaves 6%. That's a fair amount of growth. And you can shake your head, Candace, it's fine, but that's the simple math. It's fully funded. I understand also that property tax valuations have risen at unprecedented rates. It happens at the Merritt household as well, with significant amount of, you know, rate increase. But we all have an opportunity to challenge that and go down and produce a argument against tax rate on your particular property. Everyone has the opportunity to do that. I did it in my household. I hope others have taken that advantage as well. This is an attempt to provide some tax relief across the entire community. The idea of a water rate credit impacts everyone equally on a horizontal scale. The addition of a tax dividend addresses everyone on the property scale. So it's a benefit equitable on two different axes. We're not solely focused on a single approach to solving the existing tax challenge. We're fully aware that the water rate approach addresses all customers and does not address some segments. And we're talking about the Oak Brook Homeowners Association, and I know Marvin Burrows, I've reached out to him and I've talked to Colleen as well on the phone, and we've addressed this and we will work to find a solution in my mind, and I will work with Sherrell and staff to make sure that that is taken full advantage of and is equitably addressed. I'm aware that the Senate, the 2019 Senate Bill Number Two will change how communities like ours meet the needs of services going forward and limit the 3.5% increase requiring voter approval. We're going to run into tough times coming forward. It's going to happen. And I'm going to sit here and tell you today that we're going to have much more strenuous discussions about the levels of service and level of amenities that our city can offer based on the taxing that has been determined in Austin. We're also aware that the US inflation is running at about 7% for the calendar year of this year, 2022. The city pays for expensive items as well, just like homeowners. So we have challenges and we've talked at study sessions about the budget, the cost of ambulances and fire trucks and police cars have risen significantly. The amount of servicing of highway, our, our streets and our repairs to water lines are going up. So the cost of running the city is going to continue to rise. I'm fully aware that and understand that our community benefits from that 75-25 split between businesses and residents relative to the property tax revenues. That is a benefit that this city should take advantage of and has taken advantage of. And we talk about from time to time comparing us to the breadbasket cities of 18 or 19 other cities. We are in that same group. Our tax property revenue is the third lowest on that basket of groups. Those other cities also have more residents than we do, and therefore they're entitled through the government programming to more federal funds. And so therefore the challenge of if Carrollton is paying out federal funds and we can't, that's because we don't have as many federal funds as they do. I'm also fully aware that its Dallas County Appraisal District is the sole administrator for the assessment of property taxes. It's not Farmers Branch raising your tax rates. It is the property valuations occurring at DCAT. We also know that two-thirds of the properties are at or below the average residential figure of $327,000. So the tax rate decrease for many of those folks is going to be significantly lower. And therefore, as I said a moment, with the dual axes of giving a tax water credit and a dividend, we can address the totality of our community. The state also caps the amount the property tax can raise at 10% from any one year. That is also a benefit that many of us took advantage of. And I know we had speakers talk about the amount of particular property raises over a single year, but let me assure you, the state of Texas capped those at 10% on this particular property tax bill. There are also several other revenue sources in the general fund beyond property tax, sales taxes, franchise fees, service fees, to name some of the largest. We are not changing any of our service fees to the residents in this particular proposal. Other cities, while they may be reducing their tax rates, are raising their service fees to the residents. You can go and look and see the detail. So if you're taking, taking only one element and comparing it to another, it does not show the entire picture. Also concerning is the Texas Rule 3.334 that may do, that may address sales tax revenues going forward. We are concerned about this as a city because we actually joined in with several others, including the City of Capel, to challenge the state comptroller's direction on this particular item. We earned a fair return, surprisingly, in the post-COVID period of having more sales tax revenue, which is a boon and a, you know, positive thing for our city so we can do more projects and more initiatives across the city. Let me assure you that we have a sincere desire to manage fund balances going forward to allow the city to both weather the proverbial rainy days and continually to be fiscally smart to maintain improved financial rating agency designations. Our city just earned the AAA rating from our rating agencies. We need to continue to work diligently to maintain that by managing our funds appropriately going forward. And please understand, there are numerous future projects that need to be addressed in the future. Streets, we've talked before in our study session, there, there are 401 miles of streets in the city of Farmers Branch. And I said in the last study session that we had here at the DIAS, the Director of Public Works says it's $4.8 million to repair one mile of streets. $4.8 million. If we are in a pay-as-you-go type mentality, which won't last going forward, we are going to have to go out and collect bond money in order to pay for these large infrastructures. There's 217 miles of water lines that need to be repaired because they are older than 50 years old, according to the same Director of Public Works. Understand that our community also enjoys 20% homestead exemptions that not every other city in that same basket of 19 cities enjoys. We also, also mentioned that we've increased the over 65 and disability exemptions to $100,000. Again, not all those other communities enjoy that benefit. Please also understand that we enjoy revenues from the landfill, allowing for our residents not to be charged for tax trash collection, excuse me. That will eventually, in a period of 20 to 25 years, go away, and that cost will be borne by the residents going forward. In order to address that, we've set aside more than $1 million in our budget to address the future landfill closure costs. Being fiscally responsible, because there's probably a $30 million charge roughly to close the landfill when it does reach its conclusion. And understand, we're operating in a challenging labor market, as already alluded to, where salaries and benefits are going to be higher in the days ahead. And it is our, with our future expenditures exceed our future revenues, only option is to reduce services. And the same level of, you know, community angst will be vetted, I suspect, when services have to be reduced. Please understand that we also know that there are new developments in the pipeline that will allow more, we've talked about this multi-sport complex, there are other multifamily issues, there are other developments in the pipeline that are going to add to our property revenue. So it should position ourselves going forward. But I do believe wholeheartedly that there are challenges in our budget that we're not all going to agree on. But at the same time, it is very difficult to sit here and grapple with trying to make sure that we have a city that we can look forward to being successful in the years ahead, rather than simply giving back a, one approach at a property tax decrease. We are still matching that while not the numbers and where that 5% came from. We all, at least I do, believe that it came out of one presentation, but it is not, it was only a reference point and not a fact. We looked over the funds that we had available. We've, I believe we've made good choices on how we're expending those funds, positioning ourselves to address TMRS, to address other things that we need to do, upgrade our historical park with a new event center. We're used, we used our money last year for the new park, the new playground, signature playground. That's last year's budget, folks. That's not this year's budget. So that money has already been spent. Those dollars are already sunk. I hope you enjoy the park when it's constructed in May or summer of 2023, but it's coming online. We can't, I don't see a way to retract that. But this is very difficult, folks. Lost sleep over this. I've had to make sure that I manage my own marital arrangement. My wife asked me, why would I want to do this? I want to make sure that our city is something that we're all proud of, that we're all, we've had the entire fire crew here today. We're all proud of them. I see Chief DeDeere out here. We're, we're all proud of the services that we get. You don't get that in other communities. We benefit from that because we pay our taxes and we allow the fine folks that are putting these budgets together. And we've had our discussions and we've wrestled with them, and we may not agree, and we may change our mind, but it is difficult sometimes when we come to an agreement or perceived agreement or consensus, that someone's definition of consensus is not the same as my definition of consensus. Consensus to me is that we've agreed on it and we can move on. But that's not the operating environment that we are in at the moment. So I've said my piece. I've heard the citizens. I sit here as an elected official, and at some point, the election will happen again. See where... That's a really, it's a really rough, it's a really rough tenor to work in, and we're going to be trying to hire a city manager, and to hear that level of challenge is disappointing. I mean, it, it just is. Mayor, I'll turn it back.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Williams.
Thank you, Councilmember Merritt. I think you spoke very eloquently on many of the topics that we've wrestled with up I want to thank all the citizens who came out and spoke. It's important, and if we had more people who participated on a civil level and on a municipal level, we'd be a better city for it. So I appreciate you coming. Your voices are heard. We may not always agree, but you are heard. For my fellow council members, saying, this is a hard job, and this is a payless job, many times a thankless job, but we all felt called to do it, and, and we all felt the call of civil duty and civil service. And whether we agree or disagree, I will always appreciate every one of you for answering that call because it's not for the faint of heart. Running is not for the faint of heart. Sitting up here is not for the faint of heart. Going into each and whenever one of those study sessions is not for the faint of heart, and especially in this budget season. So I appreciate you. I appreciate the conversations. And I don't have anything to add to what Councilmember Merritt said because you are fiscally sound and we are fiscally in agreement, and I appreciate your comments. My last comment goes to Sherrell. And I appreciate you, and I see you, and I have seen you for the past two months, and I stand with you. the past two months, and I stand with you, because I know that this budget does not somehow line your personal pocket. You have nothing to gain from setting for giving us good advice, other than being a wonderful steward and a financial advisor to this city. And I hope you know that, and I hope you see it, and I hope you feel it. Thank you, Mayor. That's all I've got to add.
Councilmember Driscoll.
Thank you, Mayor. I guess I'm last. First of all, I want to thank Sherrell Evans-Jones and her and staff. I don't know all of them that she mentioned earlier, but as our new Chief Latimer said, it's a team effort. It's Team Farmers Branch for us, for Fire, PD, Parks, Public Works, everybody. And I just want to thank you, Sherrell, for your stamina, your grit, your patience with us, having the tenacity to answer all the questions, to review, change, and manage the budget. As you said, it's a long process, and for those of us that were on council, we, this process started in January at our council retreat, and we went over what are the strategic objectives through every department, every area, all the boards and commissions, et cetera. And working in a city, helping to manage a city collectively, it's complicated. It's not a piece of cake, as has been alluded to by everyone. And we talk to people, we're out in the community, we try to listen. We can't agree with everyone. It's an impossible task. I'm not going to go into a lot of details, but sometimes I'm challenged, oh, well, why aren't you spending money on this? Why aren't you spending money on that? Again, we don't have a à la carte city. That's not how things work. We can't say, well, I don't want to pay for Fire unless I need them. And, you know, someone wants a dog park, someone else doesn't have a dog, doesn't want it. Some people go to the library every day, some people have never been in the library, but we need a library. That's just an example, but I'd like to say that I think all of us up here, while we have differences and we have different backgrounds, different business experiences, et cetera, I think we agree on far more than we disagree on. I think we agree on far more than we disagree on. And I think that's true in our country, and we are in difficult times politically, socially, economically, and we don't know what the road ahead is, but I think all of us here have worked collectively, diligently, to try to do the best job we can. And that's all we can do. But I think I've pretty much made all of my views and opinions on the budget clear over this last months and weeks, so I don't really have a lot to add to it. And again, I know it's been a difficult, laborious process for everyone, and we have heard from lots of people all across the city, people that have lived here 50 years plus, people that have lived here a year, six months. And that's all of us, and it is a community. And yeah, just in conclusion, I'd just like to say again that we try to do the best job we can. We cannot make everyone happy. That's just impossible. But I think we've been fiscally prudent with this budget, and I think that's all I have now, Mayor. Thank you.
Councilmember Driscoll, thank you very much. All right. I appreciate everyone's remarks, truly. It's been a long, fun process during these last two months, but my remarks are very simple. I move to approve adopting ordinance number 3759.
I second.
I have a motion and a second by Councilmember Williams. Is there any more discussion from council? Seeing none, I'll ask you all to mark your vote at this time. Motion passes, 5-0. Next, I move to approve ordinance 3754, approving and amending the city's fiscal year 2021-22 operating and capital improvement budget and adopting the city's fiscal year 2022-23 operating capital improvement budget.
I second.
I have a second by Councilmember Williams. Is there any more discussion? I'll ask you all to mark your vote at this time. Motion carries, 3 to 2. I move to approve resolution number 2022-098, ratifying the property tax revenue increase reflected in the fiscal year 2022-23 budget.
I second.
I have a second by Councilmember Williams. Is there any more discussion? I'll ask you all to mark your vote at this time. Motion carries, 3 to 2. I move that the property tax rate be increased by the adoption of a tax rate of .589, which is effectively a 17.56 increase in the tax rate.
And the ordinance.
And the, where's the ordinance number?
275.
And to approve ordinance number 3755.
I second.
I have a second by Councilmember Williams. Is there any more discussion? I'll ask you all to mark your vote at this time. Motion carries, 3 to 2. Lastly, I move to approve ordinance number 3762, to provide for a dividend from the surplus revenue from the general fund for the city's taxpayers.
I second.
I have a second by Councilmember Williams. Is there any more discussion? I'll ask you all to mark your vote at this time. Motion passes, 5 to 0. Next, let's take any action necessary as a result of the closed executive session. Councilmember Williams.
May I move that the city manager be authorized to negotiate and execute on behalf of the city an economic development incentive agreement for Project Macy, including any amendments or instruments relating thereto, which provides a grant of $175,000 for tenant finish-out to be paid in two equal installments of $87,500, each with the first payment to be made on execution of lease of 12990B Street, Suite 100, Farmers Branch, and the second installment to be made on the date of issuance of a certificate of occupancy, provided that the company leases and occupies approximately 3,000 square feet of space at 12990B Street, Suite 100, Farmers Branch, for a period of at least seven years, beginning August 30, 2023, subject to the standard terms and conditions, except that the repayment of the grant shall be prorated based on the number of full years of compliance with the terms and conditions of the agreement.
I have a motion by Councilmember Williams.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Driscoll. Is there any more discussion? We did not have anyone signed up to speak to this item, so I'll ask you all to mark your vote at this time. Motion passes unanimously. I believe we have one more motion.
I do. May I move that the city manager be authorized to negotiate and execute on behalf of the city an economic development incentive agreement for Project Highway, including any amendments or instruments relating thereto, which provides a grant of...
Second. Hand me that stack.
What we decided the grant was? Because we were looking at the amount out.
There is no amount.
No amount.
No amount.
Thank you.
That provides a grant of some amount for tenant finish-out and remodeling to be paid in two equal installments at time of decision, with the first payment to be made on execution of a lease of 13090B Street, Farmers Branch, and the second installment to be made on the date of issuance of a certificate of occupancy, provided that the company leases and occupies approximately 8,500 square feet of space at 13090B Street, Farmers Branch, for a period of at least seven years, beginning May 30, 2023, subject to the standard terms and conditions, except that the repayment of the grant shall be prorated based on the number of full years of compliance with the terms and conditions of agreement.
I have a motion by Councilmember Williams.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Driscoll. Is there any more discussion? Seeing none, and since we have no one signed up to speak to this item, I will ask you all to mark your vote at this time. Motion passes, 5 to 0. Seeing no more business to conduct tonight, I will conclude tonight's meeting. You all have a good night. The time is 8:15 p.m.